We're building every little slowly they can.
Well, you know, that's that's the beauty of Wheatland Township. We have some space and if you think we have space, you should.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order now at seven thirty one P M. I'll start with the pledge.
And pledge to apply in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, first up, uh, Bill, if you could do the roll call, please.
Supervisor Crowner.
Chair.
Trustee Hickey.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Here.
Trustee Ruskis.
Here.
Highway Commissioner Tom Leeser.
There.
Assistant Mary Katsberg absent. Ex-collector David Scriven Young absent. Clerk Anita Liski absent. Bill Green, Deputy Clerk in her place.
All right, thank you, Bill. Uh, for next item, uh, public comments. Do you have any public comments? All right, hearing none. Uh, next item on the agenda, approval of the July eighteenth, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
All motion.
Thanks. Right, any comments or feedback on the minutes? Hearing none, you do roll call, please.
Roll call Supervisor Crowner.
Yes.
Trustee Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Let's see.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, can we please get a motion to approve the August eighth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion Jones, second, Hickey. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Supervisor Crowner.
Yes.
Trustee Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
All right, motion carries by zero, thank you. Uh, first item under new business approval of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four township audit. Uh, can I get a motion to start that process, please?
I make a motion.
The second.
Second.
All right, so motion Racus, second, Kraswinski. And we have a representative from Southern Fox. He'd like to go ahead and give your presentation, please.
Yeah, thanks for having me here this evening. So just as kind of refreshing.
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed Tracy. Sorry, P R E C Y. Um, so again, the purpose of the audit is to provide a reasonable assurance, not absolute, but reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented. So when we do an audit, we, we want to think we do initially is we assess what are the significant areas for the entity for the township? And where is there a risk of potential misstatement um to the financial statements and then make sure we design our audit procedures to address those identified risks? We, we take a look at internal controls, uh, perform the walkthroughs of trend action, review the control systems with, um, it's getting Mark and Carolyn. And just to make sure we, we have an understanding of internal control processes in place and, and again, do the walkthrough to see that they're being filed. Um, as a result of that process, you know, we don't give an opinion on internal control and financial statement audit, but if there are any, if we identify any material weaknesses in controls or some deficiency, efficiencies in control, we would bring those to your attention and recommend changes, but we did not identify any of those or, you know, everything seemed to be operating as designed and we felt that the controls were in place, were effective uh to prevent a misstatement of financial statements. Um, so after we've done that, then we perform substantive procedures over the various balance sheet and uh revenue expensive accounts, significant accounts there. We, we, we reconcile balance sheet accounts to subsidiary detail ledgers, third party reports, confirmations from third parties, things like that. And with P N L, we do similar procedures, but also kind of compare things to the prior year, compare things to the budget. Look for significant variances or unexpected variances and investigate those further. So it's a lot of uh reviewing and supporting documentation, reviewing the third party documentation. Uh, we, as a result of our audit, we made one adjustment um to the fund financial statements, which uh probably a record, close to a record year, because we usually don't make any, uh, but it was just one adjustment to record some interest on the wind trust investment account for a month of January through March twenty twenty four. It was a little under ten thousand dollars uh that had been recorded, yeah, so we made that adjustment. Uh, we do make, also make some adjustments to convert the fund financial statements to what's called the government-wide financial statements in the report. So there's these two separate financial statements. The government-wide is more of a long-term, uh, it's a full accrual basis. So long-term assets, long-term liabilities around the balance sheet. Like you purchase a truck, it's put on the balance sheet depreciated over time. Whereas in the fund financial statements, it's more of a current focus. You purchase a truck, you expense it at the time you purchase it. So we make adjustments to convert the fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. We do that through use of to work paper schedules that we get from, from the township. Uh, we also get reports from the actuaries at I M R F to, to recognize the net pension liability at I M R F. So these are the types of long-term adjustments that get made to the financial statements to convert the funds, financial statements to the government-wide financial statement. And just a couple of highlights for the year from the uh, the financials uh that in the government-wide financial statements, so this full accrual basis, you had a positive bottom line for the year of seventy one thousand eight nineteen. Uh, in the fund financial statements, overall, you had a positive bottom line of seventy thousand two ninety-eight. So revenues exceeded expenses by seventy thousand. Uh, the general town, so when we look at the fund, we, we identify them as either major funds or non-major funds. Any fund that has, is ten percent of the assets, the liabilities, the revenues or total expenses, one of those categories is a major fund. Uh, for the township, the general town fund, road and bridge fund and the hard road fund are major, meet, meet that qualification as major fund. Uh, general town fund had a positive bottom line for the year, a little over twelve thousand. And the road and bridge had a positive uh bottom line for the year of about a hundred fifty two thousand. And the hard road fund had a negative bottom line, so expenditures exceeded revenues by about two hundred twenty-five thousand. And that was, that was as budgeted. Uh, the, the general revenues in the general fund exceeded budget by about fifty-seven thousand. Um, primarily due to investment income being very strong this year. Uh, expenses were under budget in the, in the general fund, general town fund by about a hundred fifty thousand. So overall results came in uh better than budget by more than two, two hundred thousand. I mean, you take the fifty-seven plus the revenues and a hundred fifteen made of the expenses, it's about two hundred eight thousand. Um, and at the end of the year, your fund balance in the general town fund was approximately a hundred fifty percent of your annual expenses. But in a very um secure position. Uh, the road and bridge fund, as mentioned, had a positive bottom line of about a hundred fifty thousand versus a budget of fifty-six thousand. So you came in well excess of budget expectations, mostly resulting from savings and expenses versus budget. And the hard road fund, as I mentioned, had a loss of two hundred twenty-six thousand. Um, it was budgeted for a loss of about a hundred thirty-five thousand or additional capital outlay type expenses that took place during the year. Um, so overall, uh, the fund balance at the end of the year is still at three hundred forty thousand. So still, you still have some, you still have some uh good reserves in that fund even after this year. Uh, and then lastly, as I mentioned before, the I M R F net pension liability. So again, I M R F, you contribute money to I M R F, they hold it in a bucket for you. Um, you know, they pull it with all the investments, but you have your piece of that pie uh and they use that money to pay benefits as they come due. Uh, and they calculate the total benefits earned today, compare that to the funds on hand. And at the end of the year, your, your, your piece of the pie was ninety percent funded up a little bit from the prior year. So you still have a little bit of a net pension liability, but that's, that's, that's fine. I mean, that's to be expected. Uh, typically, that's where you want to be in that ninety percent range.
Is it a requirement?
That it's, 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 it's the employer contribution was determined based on some extra assumptions to get you to a point where you're a hundred percent funded if you guys you think in your twenty-four years something.
Yeah.
But um it's, it's, as long as you continue to make the contribution, you're fine. Uh, it, two years ago was over a hundred percent because investments had a string of really high returns. I mean, they assume like a seven half percent return on your investments. There was a number of years, you know, a few years ago where those returns were twenty percent. You know, consecutive years, and you got to the point where you were well over a hundred percent funded. Well, the last couple of years has taken a little bit step back. The return hasn't been quite as good. So you've come down a little below a hundred. But again, that, that calculation at monthly, or that, that annual employer contribution rate is determined based on, on those assumptions and, and the results. And it doesn't, and those results are kind of uh it's, we can look at it on like a five-year rolling average of those returns. So, you know, if you have one really bad year, it doesn't suddenly your contribution doesn't shoot up to the roof. If you have one really great year, your contribution doesn't drop to the floor. It was a, it was a, a run of like four or five years that were really had really good returns.
But I, I remember, yeah.
That your rates came down and your rates are rare, but still very, they're pretty low. Uh, so uh that, I mean, it, so one year doesn't affect it too much. It's just if you have a, a run of good years or bad years, it's one year. Can't be sure it's really gonna fluctuate. As long as you're in that ninety, ninety-five range, um, that's, that's your, your, that's a wealth fund. It's, that's a very, yeah, that's a wealth fund. And everybody in I M R F is in that range just now. Uh, unless you choose to throw in an additional one, some places throw in additional money, uh, pre-fund it, I guess. Um, I, I I mean, I don't know if that's necessarily the smartest thing to do or not. I mean, I, I certainly don't go around saying you have to do that. Um, but so, uh, you're, yeah, it, it, it's in a range, it's in a very positive position. Everybody in I M R F is in that same boat. So I, I'm just, that I'm a well-run plan, I would be rich.
Far exceeding any other plan at the state level.
So, which is why.
Yeah, I, I was at a highway commissioner event where they had T O I and, and then, and there was a session on I M R F and everything you're saying is there, although I, I thought there might be some, you know, uh, like they didn't come out and say the same thing, but uh I thought there was some minimum level, they, they don't want to go below ninety. Or it's not.
They're, it, you know, it, not, you know, I've been, I've been working with settlements for a long time. You know, I, you know, ten, over ten, ten, fifteen years ago, most were at like sixty-five, seventy percent funded. So it's, they've definitely worked their way up close to the nine, you know, closer to the hundred percent range in the last ten years or so. Um, some of that was the benefit of some really good earnings years. So, um, but I think that, that is, I mean, they, they determine employer contribution, try to keep you right in that range. And I, and you'd say that's the best run plan. That's why, um, like the police and fire pensions have all consolidated, um, because they're trying to model what I brought to you. And at the time, they wanted my rest, they know what they're thinking. They weren't up for that challenge, I don't think.
But, but everything that was said downstream, it was.
Yeah.
Exactly what you said.
And, and just, uh, just to summarize things, I mean, uh, the book's in really good shape. We were able to come in and get our work done in a timely manner. We certainly appreciated that. And um, you know, just a, a solid year, you know, good adherence to budget, not real significant swings, especially in the general town fund in the budget. Um, very little, um, you know, significant variances for budget, such on the expense side, so that, that's a very positive. But that would be your overall.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? Um, so you're just looking at twenty twenty four, right? I, I saw a table comparing like the previous years.
Yeah.
Um, so I just saw like twenty twenty four expenses were three point one million, but twenty twenty-three were two point five. That's a very twenty-five percent difference. Is there? Was there like, well, you don't look at that really.
Well, we, we would have audited, we, we audited last year and, uh, the end, I don't remember exactly what happened last year. It was a lot of, long time ago. Um, but in the management discussion analysis section of the audit, there is some comparative tables there for the balance sheet, meaning if they, if, if statements, so you're right. Um, that could, that, and usually one of those variances between years, and I think I could go back and get a word, get a little more, but it is, it's probably related to kind of uh capital outlay type or, you know, improvements, road improvements maybe or something. That's, that's usually where the significant swings are. I can tell you there weren't a lot of significant swings in personnel costs in, um, you know, kind of operational type things. It would have been more of the project type stuff that would, would cause it to swing significantly.
Yeah, it would have largely come out of the road district. So for a few years, we were saving up for big projects. It depended those projects and now we're kind of backwards saving mode.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's like a fine line. It's like, how much you want to, you know, take out like a, a bond or a loan for it versus save because it's better just save it and then pay it, but okay.
Yeah.
Explain.
Nice, yeah.
Any additional questions? All right, I very much appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, can we get a roll call to accept that budget? I'm sorry, the audit, rather, for.
Approval of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four township audit.
Yes.
Roll call Supervisor Crowner.
Yes.
Trustee Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Five zero, pass fail.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have our presentation by the N E A Energy Advisors.
You're going to standard sit.
I just completely out here. All right, I'm gonna sit.
Okay.
Uh, all right, it's, uh, my name is Michael K. Calliway. We can spell all that.
I'll send them the spell right out here.
Uh, I'm president of the N E A Energy Advisors. Uh, your, your normal advisor is Becky Thompson, and she's on vacation this week, so you get the B team. Um, we're here to explain what aggregation is, give context of what's been done prior, um, uh, some metrics on what the program has done, and then place some groundwork.
Really.
And give some market prognostication. So I'll just walk along. You guys have any questions? Uh, as I go, 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 jump in.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes.
That may be mine. I hit my button by accident.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It'll, it'll run out of gas.
Um.
We'll get you all.
Yeah.
Uh, so electricity aggregation, uh, it was passed by referendum of township residents in April two thousand thirteen. Uh, what is residential aggregation in English? Uh, basically residential uh aggregation allows residents to combine their buying power, secure rates for electricity that normally couldn't, they couldn't get individually. It's giving leverage to town residents in buying. Uh, a really key point, though, uh, for residential aggregation is that residents can opt out of this agreement at any time without penalty and, and return to combat there at any point during the contract. So there's really no risk to residents. So it's purely, um, to give them that option.
Is there a limited amount of time we can do like help in, help in?
I don't think so. No, it, it's actually regulated by state law. So the consumer protection law, uh, that came about, so, uh, nothing kind of I mean, the problem is you're kind of chasing, as you'll see, comment rates go up and down.
Yes.
So you're a little chasing your tail at a certain point. People watch it there and watch as closely as possible. Um, so that's what electric, electricity aggregation is. Um, just to give some metrics behind the program, since April of twenty thirteen, um, we see an average participation rate of sixty or seventy, between sixty and seventy percent by township residents. Um, during the current term, which we'll go into a little bit, which started in January twenty-three. There's a two-year term, so this takes us through January twenty-five. Um, residents uh of the township have saved an average of two hundred nine dollars on their electricity spend. So the, the, the program has actually performed very well against, then we'll go a little bit more deep, but if you'd like to see some. Um, current program, again, it's a two-year term. Uh, it started in January twenty-three. It takes us through next January. Um, the rate that was secured, uh, for residents was ninety point two five cents per kilowatt hour, uh, and the winning supplier at the time was empty squared energy, the retail supplier. Any questions?
Okay.
Uh, just give a little bit more detail about what the program has actually done. All right. So, um, as you can see, the blue line is a secured rate uh by the program. So orange rate is comment uh default rate for supply. Important note, when, when the state deregulated their electricity industry, ComEd does not make power anymore. They only deliver it. So they go to the market to cure it just like we do, um, here and residents of the um, their timing is a little different. They just buy it at bulk at one time just to know they have it, so they have no care about what that rate is. Um, so you can see, it, it's gone up and down. Um, and over the term of this agreement, again, residents have saved about two hundred nine dollars. Um, you see some, some months, um, we've been over the rate. Most of the time, we've been far under it, um, to, to.
Were they saving two hundred and nine over two years or over two years?
Yeah.
Um, just some energy market updates. Um, so those that may or may not know, electricity is a traded commodity. When you hear about gold and oil and silver being traded on a market, electricity was the same way. So there's a timing aspect of when we want to lock. Um, if you can see in the chart, when we locked last, it was October of twenty twenty-two. Um, everything was more expensive in twenty-two. The market has since come down a little bit. Um, for the surprise of many, we had a top five hot summer on record, but even with, in that, uh, even during that, electricity rates have still come down. Um, we're not market predictors, but there's a lot of worry in the industry that the rates are going to take off here, um, in the next few years for electricity. Uh, we've got, we've had, we haven't had any demand as a nation increase in electricity. And right now, there's forecasts about five to six percent per year of increased demand of electricity. Um, primarily uh backed by data centers, uh, E V chargers. You've got cannabis growers, uh, you've got state mandates that say no natural gas, so you want electric heat. You've got Billy, uh, you've got manufacturing automation. There's a huge thirst now for electricity. Um, so there's really, there's prognostication of electricity rates that, that they will take off here, um, in the short term. Uh, primarily the biggest key in that is data centers. At the same time, you've got, uh, supply, uh, that we're shutting, and now the rest of our coal plants, natural gas are going to be the next one to go. And we're frankly not building enough, uh, to, uh, new generation through solar or wind to supply that. That's the state of the market right now. Um, but right now, we're a little bit less than.
You heard, um, twelve side note. A chat G P T search takes seventeen times more energy than a Google search.
Yeah, it's ten.
Top of the.
Yeah, it's like nine point eight, but yeah.
Yeah, that kind of blew me away.
Yes, that's.
I was like, I think I'll go back to.
Yeah, so if we typed in, um, search for Wheatland Township in Google, and we did the same thing in Chat G P T, the amount of energy for both those searches is ten, ten to one, um, for Chat G P T. So, yeah, that's the main driver.
Your data center.
Data centers are, are sucking all of electricity here. And they're still building new ones, so that's whether, probably get worse. Any other questions market-wise? Okay. Um, this winter is forecast, there's something, I don't know if you've heard, La Niña, El Niño. Meteorologist spit out those terms every year. Right now, we're going into an El Niño, uh, weather pattern, which is forecast to be a cold winter. Uh, it was a hot summer too because of that. Um, the reason I bring that up is again, weather does, um, impacts electricity rates, um, quite drastically. So we do have a cold winter. We can't expect rates to, to go up, um, all of our hats. Just, there's a lot of risk out there on the upside of it. So that's why it's a good time now to be talking, is we've got a real, uh, gulf right now, uh, and where rates are at. Any questions?
My, okay. Uh, um, well, uh, you, you do the two-year.
Yes.
Uh, given where we are, we, it's, if you think of like a two-year term better than a one-year term or or a three-year term, and you got.
I always got an opinion, yeah.
Um, gun to my head, I think a two-years, that, they're better because of the risks in the market. Um, again, Illinois is one of the, has one of the higher standards for going green, and we're going to start paying price for it in higher rates. Um, this, this is what will happen, I think. So longer term, I think protects the residents from those increases. Again, if it doesn't pan out, they can drop out as well. So they're protected from the app. They've got the option to get out. So I think the, the residents get best of both worlds from that scenario. So that's why I think the long term is, is more insurance in it than money. Again, my opinion, we don't predict, but there's a lot of risk up there. There's, there's what I'd say right now.
If I'm recollecting correctly, was it two years ago when we were like really specific on the day that you pulled the trigger?
Yeah, so, cause, so we were having this conversation two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And the rates were a little bit higher. And I said, let's watch this for, I said, let's they, so they gave me authority. I said, I'm gonna watch it for two weeks, and I think we watched it for two weeks and we went from like oh nine seven five to oh nine two five, and they're like, all right, lock it in now. And then we were able to lock it in, so we were.
That's what we had till November one.
Yeah, to select a new one, to, in order to be on time for January one.
Yeah.
So if we went after, our residents would have to be using ComEd right from January one until the new contract would go into effect.
Are you feeling bored, Michael?
I don't know. I got a little bit of research to do again.
Uh, so yeah, the, the ComEd deadline is November first. So right now, as far as next steps, there's, um, there's no, nothing to act on now. What we do is just provide rates at the, at the next board meeting with multiple suppliers. So we want to provide that competition to, uh, try and drive down that cost as well.
Yeah, we, so just to give you all an idea, if we have to do it by November first, that means we have to approve at our October meeting, because the next, uh, meeting after that wouldn't be until November fourteen.
So we would go to the market for red options, we have multiple suppliers. Again, we'd look at a one or two or three years. So we, we, we have different options than that. We think it would just be one, one rate to.
Perfect. And so then I presume I will get the forms for authority to pull data for you all to do the brokerage, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, and then Becky.
Yeah.
Smarter than me, and I should be here next.
Okay. Any additional questions as far as next steps or about the program overall? I was happy to see that we're still at a net positive on the, uh, on the program.
Yeah, even when it's down below, it's been about ten percent, uh, and then a few months it bumped back up.
Yeah.
The, uh, the delts begin to.
Did draft that rate? Do, do people change or they don't?
Not typically.
Okay.
Um, not unless there's a big, you know, if we were at nine two and it went and I met, so they were at six. Yeah, right now, kind of.
Because it, right after, like, I remember two years ago, there, there was a period where it kind of, it was up in the eleven or twelve, and they went down to
Yeah.
For three months, they went down to six, and I, I remember getting a few phone calls. And, uh, I was curious.
So that's not reflected on here. What, is it because this is including the fees that they pay that were not paying?
Yeah, so there's a, there's, there's been testimony down at the P U C is that ComEd comes out with a published rate, but they also vary a lot of the supply costs and their other costs, where if you switch providers, none of this, you get your own supplier.
Be all in, that's the key words you gotta say all.
Yeah, so there's a fight with the industry now to reclassify what that all-in rate, because when you switch away from ComEd, all those other fees fall off as well. So right now, we, it's about a two, two point two cents. So there's a big trade at the capital, which, at the P U C is a, you've got to start listing this correct.
Okay.
All of the, I guess, exactly.
No more questions online, anybody else, before we move on? All right, Michael, thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate it. So.
Amanda, your card is on Instagram.
Okay, so next item on our agenda, we have, oh, I just realized there's a title on the agenda, go six point one, six point two, six point two. Anyways, uh, approval of resolution number twenty-four dash zero eight dash R, resolution honoring Pamela Bishop's retirement. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All right, um, I will just quickly read the, uh, resolution. Uh, it's resolution number twenty-four dash zero eight dash R, resolution honoring the retirement of Pamela Bishop. Whereas Pamela Bishop began her career at Wheatland Township in two thousand and four, working here until her retirement in twenty twenty-four. Whereas Pamela has been a dedicated employee of Wheatland Township, whereas Pamela has always maintained high standards in her work as deputy assessor. Whereas the township of Wheatland, uh, wishes to recognize Pamela for her dedication and excellent service to the citizens of Wheatland Township. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wheatland Township Board of Trustees hereby honors Pamela Bishop for her dedication to the township and its residents and wishes her a long and happy retirement. So any notes on the resolution before we go to a vote? I was hoping Mary would be here tonight for a few additional comments, but she's unable to attend. All right.
What is worth, Pam, would get our mail every time she walked at lunchtime, and now we, now it's like we missed that, so.
So. Actually, we do. It's like, oh, we picked up the mail today.
Yeah. It's always, she always picks it up and brings it in, and then now she's out there, it's a little, a little sad about it.
Just so you all know, what I did is I had this resolution printed on, uh, letterhead and the stock paper. So, uh, Bill, if well, we'll talk about what to do with this after, but I left a line for everybody to be able to sign, uh, the resolution to give to Pam. So can you move on to roll?
Roll call. Supervisor Crowner.
Yes.
Trustee Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you all. Uh, next item on the agenda, approval of resolution. Uh, next item on the agenda, approval of resolution number twenty four dash zero nine dash R, resolution honoring Miranda Lynn. His name, last name.
Oshus.
Oshus, twenty years of service. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I made a motion.
Okay. Alright, so you got Terry, so I'm gonna go ahead and read that one now. Resolution number twenty four dash zero nine dash R, resolution honoring twenty years of service by Brandon Lynn Poshus. Whereas Brandon Lynn Poshus began her career at Wheatland Township in two thousand and four. Whereas Brandon Lynn has been a dedicated employee of Wheatland Township for twenty years. Whereas Brandon Lynn has always maintained high standards for her work as deputy assessor. Whereas the township of Wheatland wishes to recognize Brandon Lynn for her dedicated and excellent service to the citizens of Wheatland Township. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wheatland Township Board of Trustees hereby honors Brandon Lynn Poshus for her dedication to the township and its residents. And thanks her for twenty years of service. Any comments before we move on to roll call? Here, none will call, please.
Supervisor Crowder.
Yes.
Trustee Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Five zero.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you. I think it's pretty cool. We've had significant number of employees who have gotten fifteen, twenty uh, plus years of experience, so. Um, I think it's great. And I, uh, was told today that when we uh, got the uh, plaques done for. The previous employees, I don't believe we passed a resolution, so we'll be doing the resolutions. Kind of backdating those a little bit for uh, some of the other folks, so uh, that'll be on our agenda next month. But um, thank you all for the approvals. I'll pass around the sheets for signatures. Uh, next item on the agenda, approval of bills and claims. Can I get a motion to approve our bills and claims?
I make a motion to approve the bills and claims.
I get a second, please. Um, any comments, questions, or concerns on the bills that everybody observed?
Are the flags? Um, bill for the direct. Department.
Line item? Where are they? Let's see.
I just, it sounds like you're paying for it, the township, the assessor's office?
Yeah, we're, so, okay, but. That's fine. I, I did mine.
Curious about.
Yeah. Actually, to be honest, uh, the assessor wasn't the one that requested it. Bill came up with the idea, I said, let's run with it. So it was actually led by the township side.
Right, yeah.
Any additional questions? I know Tom responded to me, I know you have the question about the uh, the bills for the building. Any, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Uh, we'll call supervisor Crowder.
Yes.
Trustee Hickey.
Yes.
Trustee Racus.
Yes.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Five zero.
Alright, we paid the bills as well. Uh, next item on the agenda, we're moving on to reports. Uh, Bill, you want to give your report?
I can.
Sure. Um, fire extinguishers is continuing. People are really bringing fires since we had some, apparently the guy came by just in his car that's normally coming by. He's like, I don't have a road to put all these in there. So he, he took, took a bunch of them and they're almost full again. So um, people are actually starting to use that, which is kind of cool, I guess. Um, Northern Illinois Food Bank for next year contacted NIFB and they're for May twenty twenty five. We'll put this all together in, in our six month window. Um, for next year's um. Uh, Northern Illinois Food Bank Food Distribution. Um, our IATA meeting was yesterday. It was at DuPage Township in the Levy Center, uh, which we co-hosted with uh, with DuPage. Uh, there were twenty seven uh, township administrators, uh, twenty four, out of twenty, with twenty four townships. Discuss current situations that have arisen over the last month. Another opportunity to trade information, you know, to see who's doing what and what's going out there. Uh, one of the other administrators asked group if anybody received their state grants yet, and nobody said yes. So not one person in there said they got their state grants. Um, between uh, uh, Highway Commissioner Wiser and myself, we know what, we know ours is on the way. Think we had, uh, uh, I don't know if you're, are you gonna talk about that part? Or you want me to talk about it? So I was flat out scared to death. Uh, two weeks ago.
Yes.
When you got a note saying that. We're not gonna get this grant because we didn't follow the direction. And it's like, oh my God, like, what direction did we miss? And it was supposed to be either uh, women or a minority, a minority owned business. And that was, Tom and I immediately started like going back in our, in, and. We couldn't find any place where they told us that this, this just kind of, it, it literally popped in after this has all been done. And I did contact um. Capel's office, Capel?
Yes.
Capel's office, and I pleaded with them. I wrote them a note saying we didn't have this. So this was actually before Tom and I really had a big note. I was already on top of it because I'm like. It, it, we can't, that, that can't happen. And I, and so they looked into it and they actually got it that uh, we um. We were, we were given a, a blessing to, so our, our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is once again still on the way. Is the two twenty five that he showed, that he was saying that we were di- different, is that, is that the two fifty? Is that what we're getting? Okay, so, so that, that answers that question is that, so that rant. Still puts us then twenty five thousand dollars still to the good.
Yeah.
But it's a business law that they accidentally routed.
So what, so what happened is uh, the state of Illinois, uh, depending on the funding mechanism, they may have. Uh, requirements that say, you know, ten percent of this contract of your work should go to women owned businesses or ten percent to minority owned. The problem was that they didn't provide Bill or Tom that notification ahead of time before he made the expense. And so they acknowledged that, they sent a letter back to us, uh, waiving the requirement because we weren't notified of it ahead of time.
The only thing I got was two fifty roads.
Yeah.
There was, there was that short of a line. And uh, we did two fifty. Technically, the, you know, we, we, there's a, there's a portion where some of the uh, subcontractors are women and minority businesses. But it's, it wasn't a prominent part or put into the contract language. We just, the, the business just happens to do that. Uh, but fortunately, you know, we didn't have to go through the rigmarole of having to prove all those things, how we get the bills out. They just waived it.
So now we know for future instances, if we get funding from this specific department to ask them ahead of time. Are you gonna require this? Because our vendors, the ones we use know how to, especially on the contracting side, they know how to uh, hire subs. To help us reach the goals that are required. So wouldn't it be an issue? It's just that we had already made the expense. Before they told.
They didn't done. Manipulate the system?
Yeah, um.
I, I know, I, I, I wouldn't say manipulate, I have to push back on that. They, they, there's several people that we work with. Cause we already have the uh, you know, fair wages uh, language in the contract. We already have a bunch of those languages in there. And uh, uh, there are, uh, amazingly in the last twenty years of them doing this. There are a lot of women owned businesses. They prominently, you know, I get paid by.
Husband signed them over to their wives.
That part, yeah, so you are, but uh, there's, there's, I get paid by businesses all the time with that moniker, so uh.
You can push back, but they just said sell them out. So it's not like they're full time employees. They're looking for contractors to appease the government's mandate. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Not agreeing.
Yeah, we just, it, it was not there when we first started off this, it was.
Probably did a darn thing wrong.
No, no, and then they, and they obviously agreed, and it just sold because it, because really, once we sent the note to them, it, it, that response came back pretty fast.
With less than twenty four hours.
But I didn't get a whole lot of sleep. Um, the last, then I, um.
I need, you'd be good.
I know. Yeah, but I mean, I have to answer, I have to answer to you, so, and all of you. Um, also, I just wanted to say uh, thank you um, for those that, that mentioned something about Dawn. Um, she's, she is doing well. She had her, had her surgery. They've had two thirds of one lung taken out. They did say they, they still, she still has little itty bitty tiny little things in there, but the, the surgeon is okay with that for now, so. Um, but they probably are cancerous, but they're just very small because the fibroids they took out were, were full of cancer, so. Um, but she's doing well and she's looking forward to going back to work. She's going nuts at home and she's. Um, when I get home, she's all, has like this list of things for me to do, cause she's been home. She can't, she won't watch this, so, um. Of, of things to do and which I'm not used to anymore around with, there's no voices, just the two of us, there's not a lot to do, but she keeps coming up with stuff, so. But thank you.
I'm glad to hear that.
That's it for me.
Alright, next, um, assessor Katzberg, I will read her report for you. Um, she said, I will not be attending the meeting tonight. Here's my report. The assessor's office has brought Shan Brodel. On board as a part time employee. She brings great experience after working as a deputy at another assessor's office. Uh, she's been very helpful to our office in handling the field and in pitching in where needed with the phones and window. Uh, we took informal appeals beginning August seventh. We had a hundred and ten requests sent through the portal and settled seventy five of them. The board of review appeal deadline was uh, September ninth. We have one hundred and seventy two formal appeals for this first week. And I will forward this to you, if you have it for the most.
I got it, I, I got it on here.
Okay. Alright, and then uh, next uh, Highway Commissioner Wiser.
Yeah, I hopefully, um. About to be approved, but I, I hopefully Bill put it in there, but uh, we're doing an ordinance uh, for one of our industrial parks. Uh, one of the businesses there, uh, there's a new business that is trucking company and they're. Parking precipitously close to their entrance, so they want us to put a uh, no parking in front of their loading dock to ensure that they can get trucked in and out of. Uh, I've done a bunch of research on it and uh, I think it's appropriate uh, to do that. It's also gonna cover an emergency entrance to make sure that uh, just like any emergency entrance or area. Uh, the fire department can get through there too. Uh, so it's gonna be a very targeted ordinance. Uh, and it should help alleviate that, so um. Um, you know, it's, it should be in your packet, and then we'll review it again and uh, sign off on it next year, next month. On the tenth.
Okay, I don't, I don't think I've gotten the ordinance yet, but we'll get that, sure, it's everybody. Um, okay, let's see here. The next uh, trustee hippie.
Okay, um, last month, the senior luncheon was on August twenty first. I wasn't there, Bill, do you wanna? Pitch for anything or no?
Was that the one we just did?
The, on the twenty.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking, was that the one we just did? Um. I, I helped out. I'm gonna be helping out more. Um, the, the seniors enjoyed their uh, their lunch very much, the pizza that day.
Uh huh.
Um, I, I, it's pretty good, cause I remember, remember the pizza. Um, they played. An unbelievably long game of bingo. It's like, oh my God, when is this gonna? Um. The um, what would have been really, really cool, because the church has heaven, uh, and actually a couple of seniors said it kind of in passing, but I think they were half serious. Um, they were having the carnival out there and they would have loved to have gone on the Ferris wheel. A few of them, so if uh, you know, the next time that they coincide, maybe we buy some tickets to the Ferris wheel. Right on the Ferris wheel or make, they'd almost fill the whole Ferris, you know, the Ferris wheel and enough things going on, and maybe they give, you know, we can. Get the name of that uh. Uh, Ferris wheel company or whatever and see if they'll, you know, give the seniors a spin for nothing or something.
I might be absent that day.
It's, 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 it's a pretty, it's got the gondolas. It's not the ones that, you know, you could do that. Yeah, have they, they enjoyed that with the pizza and the bingo.
Well, thank you, and thank you for filling in. I had to leave town for a few months, so it was. Great that you're able to do that. Um, the next senior luncheon will be Wednesday, uh, September eighteenth. And um, I am having a hard time getting a speaker for that. Um, I have tried to work with Will County Senior Services, um, Naperville Fire. And my next call is going to be to um. The Will County Sheriff, to see if we can get, those were the three things that the ladies were interested in. I did notice that a request through Senator Elman's office came through uh, that Carolyn. Ordered to me that uh, Senator Elman would like to join the luncheon in November, I believe. So. I don't know if that's just to eat or if it's to actually present. So I will get some more clarification on that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Kelly before we move on? Alright, trustee Jones.
Nothing to report.
Trustee Kraswinski.
Uh, nothing important.
Alright, trustee Racus.
No report.
Alright, and then do you have a report for Anita?
I do.
Okay. Um, and then tax collector Scriven Young sent me his notes. Let me pull them up here for you. Um, he said he had a conflict, he was unable to attend, but that since our last meeting, we sold two graves. And then um, next is uh, myself. Um, I have a note here that I will read to you all really quickly. It's from our uh, contact at Clark Environmental. Said I would like to invite uh, invite you and any other interested parties at the township to a facility tour and helicopter survey. Um, so if you want to do that, reach out to them, let me know, and I'll give you their contact information. Um.
Did they give you a park up in uh, in St. Charles?
Um, I'm not sure which location, that, that must be, if that's, I think that sounds right.
Date or anything, or just?
I'll, I'll check with them. Okay. Um, and that would conclude my report. So with that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I need this, I need this.
No, she didn't uh, have a report.
Oh, she didn't?
I don't have one.
Yeah, well, okay.
Sorry.
I know, uh, would anybody interested, there is a I-DOT uh, open house for Phase One Engineering on I fifty five.
I did see that.
Road. This is something just because the highway commissioners, but uh, would any of you guys want to be interested in going to that, or?
I think that's covering the airport road, but then will they all, I think they might be doing an update on the interchange for one twenty six, or is that not gonna be, that's gonna be included as well, right? So that'll be close by, so.
Well, I know, it's, no, it's just the I fifty five and Airport Road.
Okay.
The, the, uh, well, it does say I, I L one twenty six too.
Yeah.
So uh.
What's the date on it?
Uh, September twenty sixth, and it's at the Ovation Center. Yeah, uh.
Romeoville.
Romeoville. So uh, I, I'm. You know, I'm planning on attending, cause uh, uh, the I-DOT, I reached out to them directly, so.
What date was it?
September twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth or twenty sixth?
Twenty fifth.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Tom. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
I, alright, I have it, motion carries. Uh, meeting is concluded at eight twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Will these go on Caroline's desk, or do you want them back?
Uh, you can put them on her desk. Thank you. And you wanna stop the recording?
Yeah.
Yeah. How much rate did she get?
She's, she's actually uh.